I hereby call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. I note that we do have a quorum and only Councilmember Shoffner is absent this evening, but I believe he's going to try to phone in later for our executive session. I'd like to call on Reverend Edwin Cowley to deliver the invocation and also thank him for his many, many years of service with Fellowship United Methodist Church and Trophy Club. He has been promoted to District Superintendent of the United Methodist Church and would be moving to Richardson in May of this year. So happy for you, sad for us. His last service will be the National Day of Prayer event in Trophy Club on May 6th. And on behalf of the council, I would like to thank you for your many years of service and all you've given to our residents and present you with just a small memento so you can remember us as you move to Richardson.
We'll go to you back with our Trophy Club swags.
I understand it. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. But we'll come visit you in Richardson.
All right. Well, let us pray. Dear God, we thank you so much for the blessing of this day, a this day we've never seen before, this day that was not promised to us. We thank you for the privilege and opportunity this day gives us to give praise to your name. God, we're thankful for the way that you are present with us through the ministry of the Holy Spirit. And I just pray, God, that you will continue to do what you've done, which is to be present in this meeting, to be present with our mayor and our council persons and the town, whether we're here or online, this connectedness that we feel. And God, I pray that you would guide our leaders to make great decisions for the town as we, as a city and state and country and world kind of come back from this coronavirus. We just pray for the expiration date on that to come as soon as it can. And so, God, just continue to lead and guide this town in the way that it has been, it cares for its residents, it cares and wants to see growth happen. And so, just be here, be in this town. Good people, good leaders, so thankful to have been a part of this community and just continue to be here. It's in the name of your Son and our Savior, Jesus the Christ, that we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Lot will lead us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter. The council is not permitted to discuss or take action on any presentations made. Presentations are limited to matters over which the council has authority. Speakers have up to four minutes or the time limit determined by the presiding officer. Each speaker must have submitted their request to speak via the public portal or have completed the speaker's form. You may also email mayorandcouncil@trophyclub.org. Madam Secretary, do we have any presentations to see? Okay. We're on to our proclamation. Issuance of Proclamation 2021-07 proclaiming May 6, 2021, as Day of Prayer in Trophy Club to coincide with the National Day of Prayer. We have a very special group of familiar faces I would like to recognize as we do this proclamation. Darren Davis, there he is, master of ceremony for the National Day of Prayer since 2002. Jeff Brooks, Minister for Lake City Church of Christ, there he is. Joel Kele, pastor at Bara Church, I know he's here, I saw him earlier. Edlyn Cowley, who we just heard from and saying goodbye to later this month, Minister at Fellowship United Methodist. Ms. Irma Thomas, National Day of Prayer Task Force Coordinator, many, many years. Thank you so much for all you do. And Barry Klingon, pastor at the Church of Trophy Lakes. Is Barry here? Don't see. Well, if you're watching, hi, Barry. And then we'll go on to the proclamation. Proclamation 2021-07, Town of Trophy Club, Texas, May 6, 2021. Whereas from our nation's humble beginnings, public prayer and national days of prayer have played a vital role in the life and history of the United States dating back to the first call to prayer in 1775, when the Continental Congress asked the colonies to pray for wisdom in forming a nation, and the call to prayer has continued throughout our history. And whereas these times of national supplication were made official in 1952, when President Harry Truman signed a joint resolution of the U.S. Congress, which enacted legislation setting aside an annual day of prayer for the nation, and in 1988, this law was amended permanently setting as the day as the first Thursday of every May. And whereas throughout our history as a nation, in times of crisis and in times of calm, Americans have turned to prayer in the tradition of our forefathers, who sought the wisdom of God when faced with critical decisions, thus reaffirming the spiritual principles upon which this nation was founded. And whereas the National Day of Prayer belongs to all Americans and is a day that transcends differences, bringing together citizens from all backgrounds and walks of life to honor God, to pray for our nation, and to give Him thanks for the many liberties and blessings we have received, among them the freedom to gather, worship, and pray. And whereas this year is the 70th anniversary of the consecutive annual observance of the National Day of Prayer, and its theme is, "Lord, pour out your love, life, and liberty," praying and proclaiming a promise of God in the theme verse 2 Corinthians 3:17, "Now the Lord is the Spirit, and with the Spirit of the Lord is, there is liberty." And whereas on this National Day of Prayer, we have come together as leaders and citizens in unity as one nation under God to seek His divine wisdom, direction, protection, and strength, to meet the challenges that we face both present and future, and to offer gratitude for the many blessings He has bestowed upon our community, state, and nation. Now, therefore, I, Alicia O'Flory, in conjunction with the Trophy Club Town Council, hereby proclaim Thursday, May 6, 2021, as a Day of Prayer in Trophy Club to coincide with the National Day of Prayer. I make a motion to approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
All in favor? And it's unanimous, motion passes. And just so you all know, this will occur on May 6 at noon, and you can search in Facebook for the live stream, National Day of Prayer, 76262. And so, I hope you all join us on that day and support your community and our community leaders and everyone in 76262. And thank you so much for being here. Okay, we have a second proclamation this evening, proclaiming National Military Appreciation Month. This is observed during the month of May, and I would like to ask all military, past, present, veterans, active, and any relatives to please stand. I will be in about 14 weeks when my son finishes boot camp, so thank you very much to all the families and to all our active and veterans and all the support that your families have given you. It's so important to have that, and I will go ahead and read.
Mayor, before you read.
Oh, sorry.
Can I make a one-word change on the proclamation?
Yes, you may.
In the last paragraph where it says brave soldiers, I'd like to change that to brave service members, so we don't leave out all the other branches besides the Army.
Okay.
Are there?
There are other branches.
That is the part you're reading, so you need to notate that.
Little internal service rivalry.
Yeah. Town of Trophy Club, Texas, proclamation 20 dash, actually, it's supposed to be 21, 2021-08, we'll have to make that change too. A proclamation of the Trophy Club Town Council supporting May 2021 as Military Appreciation Month in Trophy Club.
Whereas Military Appreciation Month was officially designated by Congress in 1999 and takes place every year throughout the month of May to thank service members and their families for all their hard work. And whereas the month of May was chosen because it has many individual days marked to note our military achievements, including Loyalty Day established in 1921, Victory in Europe Day commemorating the end of World War II in Europe in 1945, Children of Fallen Patriots Day, Military Spouse Appreciation Day, and Armed Forces Day, and?
Whereas this reminder is a way to thank our U.S. Armed Forces and their considerable contribution as people have been made to the country, its history, and its growth, and whereas we remember the sacrifices and service of those that have gave all, as well as those that are serving, those that are currently deployed, and those that have just enlisted to serve our great nation, and?
Whereas the Town of Trophy Club recognizes the value in reminding our community of the important role the U.S. Armed Forces have played in the history and development of our country, and whereas we ask our community to initiate a campaign for the month of May of paying it forward for our men and women who have served or currently serving. Even the smallest of a thank you for your service provides an inviting environment and sense of pride to those serving and having served. We encourage random acts of kindness to show appreciation, as well as reaching out to our brave service members when one might not otherwise do so during the month of May.
Now, therefore, I, Mayor Alicia O'Flory, in conjunction with the Trophy Club Town Council, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Military Appreciation Month. I make a motion to approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
All in favor? And it's unanimous. We do have someone receiving this proclamation this evening. Raymond Jenkins, served in the U.S. Marine Corps from '93 to '01 as a Nuclear Biological and Chemical Defense Specialist and Operations NCO. During that time, he was an instructor at the Marine Forces Atlantic NBC School and deployed on naval ships to the European Theater three times to include NATO operations. In 2005, he joined the Army National Guard, serving multiple roles, and his deployments include Iraq and Afghanistan, where he was awarded the Bronze Star. Raymond also served the military in a civilian job as a contractor training soldiers at Fort Benning, Georgia, Fort Irwin, California, and Afghanistan. His awards include the Bronze Star, three Army Commendation Medals, two Army Achievement Medals, two Navy-Marine Corps Achievement Medals, and too many to name on this very long list of all his achievements. He also is newer to our community, but even so is an active volunteer with our Metroport Veterans Association, and also volunteers with Gallant Few. We also, if you're wondering if, for those of you who may not be familiar with our Councilman Wilson Monger and Girasi, they too are veterans as well, and that's why we had them read some of the proclamation. And I know Carl, one of your favorite things also, I'm surprised you didn't have his changes.
I almost did.
You like to say thank you for our freedom and not just thank you for our service. So I did want to include that for you. And let's see, do we have the proclamation? Would you like to meet me at the podium? So as Carl Monger would say, thank you for our freedom and thank you for our continued service, and thank you for being here this evening and all you do.
Thanks very much.
And could we have our Day of Prayer guests to come receive this proclamation? Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Pro Tem Lamont.
Yeah, I just wanted to say to Reverend Cowley, on behalf of my wife and I, we are proud to know you and wish you all the best in your new adventure.
Okay, on to announcement and reports. We have a new Community Development Director, Mr. Matt Cox.
Yes, Mayor and Council, Matt started his second week yesterday, so he is, he comes from Roanoke, spent about six years with the city of Roanoke before that, city of Salana. And before that, sir owned his own construction and landscaping business for about 18 years, so very strong in the trades, and he's going to do a great job. Comes very highly recommended, and he will be handling planning, inspections, streets, and the front counter, so just want to make sure you see where he is there.
Would you like to come up and say hello, introduce yourself?
And take that mask off so they can get a good look at you. There you go.
How are y'all?
Great, well, welcome to Trophy Club.
Thank you.
Hope you're first week.
Second week.
Well, you're still here, so that's a good sign.
Yeah, I'm here.
And he, Matt lives in North Bedford, so he's about 10 minutes away, and got three daughters, 16, I believe 11, and eight, so.
Busy, busy.
Minority and sorority.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Item four, overview of the mid-year fiscal year 2021 Town of Trophy Club budget. Ms. Irwin?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, member of council. I try to stay away as much as possible. This is our six-month overview, and what we're, a couple of things we're looking to do. First is to let you know we're six months into the fiscal year, and we see no significant problems that we need to deal with at this time. We would also like to begin to present this on a quarterly basis, just a high-level overview to give you an update of where we are. This is the general fund, revenues and expenditures, and we've just taken March for the last few years. As you can see, we're in pretty good shape, and I don't see any problems there. And if you have any questions as we go through any slides, please let me know, I'd be glad to answer them. This is a look at our revenues. Couple of things, one question that came up earlier was on grant. We're at about 1,800 now, we budgeted $220,000. If you remember the juvenile detective grant, we've not started receiving reimbursement on that, and we also expect some funds from the most recent American Recovery Act. And so, we don't see any problem there. The other one is license and permits. We expect to hit our budget number there, but we're not at the level we've been in prior years. If you look back on the last couple of years, our building permits have run about $200,000 a year. We expect them to be closer to $40,000 this year, so. But all in all, we think our revenues are doing fine. This just breaks down each department. Again, we think the departments are in good shape as we're looking at the rest of this fiscal year, and don't see any problems or any concerns. Just to give you a quick look at property tax, we're at $7,580,000. We budgeted $7,220,000. Last time I checked, the report with Denton County, we still have a balance of about $200,000 that has not been collected for this year, so we expect to hit that. On sales tax, we're about 12% ahead of where we were this time last year, so we continue to be healthy in our sales tax, and we budgeted $1,050,000, and we do not see any problems with hitting that number this year. Just to give you how we're doing on hotel occupancy tax, as you can see, we're below where we've been in the prior Marches considerably. The thing that we're, I'm wondering that we'll see in that, though, is if you look at March of 19 and 20, that's about a six-month run, and then COVID hit, and we only got about $92,000 after that, the rest of the year. We've gotten about $114,000 in this first six months, but we're starting to see somewhat of a recovery, and will we see it get up above what we, I'm sure we'll hit budget, and I expect it to get up a little bit higher than that. But in the history, it shows our normal years, we're up to about $600,000 a year in normal years on hot revenue, so. EDC fund continues to, with the sales taxes still about 12% up, and we're in good shape there. This is one thing I wanted to show to, as part of this report, and you'll also see it next week when we present the investment report. I just, I thought it was important to say, here's where your dollars are. Here are the banks and the institutions that currently, that currently have your dollars. And then, the final slide is, I just wanted to talk about our department's website, because on our website, if you look under the transparency, under dispersment register, that gives you the ability to go online and look at every check and every ACH that the town makes by month. Then if you come down to monthly financials, it gives you the ability there to look at detailed and summary financials both on a monthly basis. And so, if you remember in past years or so, y'all might have gotten a thick document with all those, they're all available right there for you and for all our citizens, for anyone. And then the final thing, I want to brag on April Duval, she worked very hard to get that interactive budget set up that gives people the ability to go to that line item and just pull up and look at different parts of the town's budget. And the plan would be that when we get the proposed budget ready at the end of the summer, we'll have it as an interactive document also during that time. And Mayor, Council, that wraps up my presentation.
Okay, we have our county government month report from Ms. Diane Edmondson, our Denton County Commissioner for Precinct Four. Thank you so much for joining us this evening to update us on your office and its role in Denton County and Trophy Club.
And like my predecessor, I have to figure out how to work this.
Mr. Carroll, can you?
Oh, get this side one? Okay. Huh, very good.
There you go.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Appreciate you letting me come tonight. The National Association of Counties has designated April as County Government Month across the country. So I'm out in my precinct sharing what county government is here in Denton County, and I appreciate being able to share with you all. As you probably know, in Denton County, like every other county in the state of Texas, we have four county commissioners. You can see these are our precincts as shown here now, and each of these is supposed to be roughly equal in population. They are not. We're getting ready to have to redistribute because those lines have to be redone as soon as we get the 2020 census. We have in Denton County a budget of about $319 million. That's down from the initial request that we had. I want to show you that we're very fiscally conservative here in Denton County, as I'm sure you are also in Trophy Club. That decrease was 2.7 million. We also adopted a tax rate that was less than the current tax rate that we had the year before, and that's something that I think is very important because that tax rate is what determines what your property taxes are. Two things that we did that I really would like to brag about. The first one is that we adopted a senior tax freeze or saving for anyone in the county 65 or older or who is disabled under the state laws regarding that. That is something that freezes not just your tax rate, it freezes your actual taxes. If you're in that age group right now, whatever your taxes are now to Denton County will never go up, and I think that's important for seniors. We also adopted something for the rest of our taxpayers, including the seniors, and that's a homestead exemption. Again, some of the cities and the school districts have homestead exemptions, but the county did not, so we did adopt that this year. And so, we had a 1% exemption, $5,000 minimum, which means whatever your appraised value is, if you are homesteading that property, then $5,000 comes off the top when the value is calculated. That's something that can help a little bit. Now, these are our expenditures for this $319 million by function, and you can see that the most that we spend is on public safety. That is the largest part of our budget. We also have many other things that you can see that we spend that money on, and it goes very quickly. $319 million, sounds like a lot of money, but in reality, it's got a lot to cover. These are the services that are required to be provided by our county government, by state law, and by our state constitution. I want to cover just a couple of those real quickly. For example, the judicial legal. We right now have 23 district, county, and justice of the peace courts. In Denton County, we are growing so fast that we have asked the legislature and expect to get two more courts here in Denton County. One will be a district court, the other will be a county court at law that will handle both probate and the general jurisdiction as well. We also have a lot of public safety that has to be provided. That's the number one thing I think that everybody expects from their government is safety. So as you can see, we have county jail, we have the Sheriff's Department, adult and juvenile probation, six constables, fire and ambulance services, and then emergency management and homeland security. The last one I want to just mention is one I'm sure you're all familiar with, and that's our Health and Welfare Department. I went to commissioner's school when I became a county commissioner a little over two years ago, and I learned that we are responsible for public health. I didn't think a whole lot about that until COVID hit, and then we all began thinking a lot about how can we help the public, how can we serve the public? Have any of you been to the TMS Vaccine Clinic? Many of us have gone, and we're very proud of the way that that has run. We've done a lot of really good things, and we're very proud to have been in charge of that. Actually, I'd say that our Vaccine Clinic is a rock star. We had people come from as far away as France and as close as Dallas County who finally decided to come to Denton County to see how that should work. We have done a lot of work there. We have administered more than 400,000 vaccinations at TMS, and virtually, we have vaccinated everybody who is on our waiting list, and at one point, we had over 504,000 people on that list. They've all been taken care of. Now, we heard about the CARES Act from your previous report, and as you can see, Uncle Sam came calling on us and said, here, we have money, would you like to have it? And we said, yes, sir, we would. While we are fiscal conservatives, when the government is offering you free money, and if they don't take, you don't take it, they're going to give it to somebody else, we owe it to our constituents to take it. So we did do that. And as you can see, we have, these CARES funds have a lot of ways that we spend it. Let me just go to the next slide. Let me say bye. We got $147.7 million initially, and then we've distributed all of that, and we will get another $172 million, which is a total of about $330 million. That's a lot of money. So how did we spend and how will we spend that money? First of all, we decided we needed to help those who need it. That's what we, as good citizens, are all about. So we decided to work with the United Way to provide grants to our nonprofits who are helping citizens who are less fortunate and who need help. We also wanted to offer housing relief because frankly, if you've lost your job, you can't make your mortgage or rent payment, and you're in danger of becoming homeless, that's a big, big problem, and we wanted to be of help there. So we did provide about $6.5 million for housing relief. That helped 4,242 households with 7,180 months of mortgage or utilities. We assisted families in 32 municipalities here in Denton County. We also wanted to help with the job situation. If you don't have a job, you can't pay that rent, you can't buy those groceries. So we wanted to help those businesses who had been affected by COVID. As you'll remember, the governor issued a shutdown of virtually all businesses that were quote "nonessential." We had to follow suit. That's the way county government and state government work. But we felt obligated to help first those businesses that we had forced to shut down. So we did that. We had, we were the pioneers in a business relief grant, and we had an average grant of $25,000, a little plus. We actually ended up distributing $38,965,156 to about 2,454 local businesses. We had a two-phase program, and it was really rewarding to see these businesses who could stay afloat one more month or two more months or whatever until they could get back on their feet. And I have to tell you, it's really encouraging to see businesses now all over Denton County finally beginning to come back out. Isn't it great to be able to go out and eat again in a local restaurant?
Yes, ma'am.
We're very appreciative of that. Well, speaking of food, food insecurity was a third thing that was important to us to deal with because we found from talking to our local food pantries that the demands for food help was up 500% during the COVID crisis. So we were able to help with Thanksgiving and Christmas meals. We also had a lot of fresh food that we were able to provide, and knowing that some of these food pantries did not have appropriate storage facilities, we were able to provide them with refrigeration to be able to do so. I think that means a lot when people know that they have a roof over their heads, hopefully have a job, and have food secure. hopefully have a job, and have food security. So all in all, we distributed, hmm, does that not want to go there? We distributed $39, almost $40 million to 36 Denton County communities. And if you look on there, you will see that Trophy Club is on that list. We were able and delighted to give Trophy Club $650,000. This was within the federal guidelines. We were asked to share with our communities, and you all were able to show us the COVID expenses that you had. And we were very pleased to be able to share that with you. Now, as a county, in addition to Uncle Sam's moneybags, we normally just have eight major funding sources. And as you all know, the majority of those come from property taxes. When I was running first for office, I found that the property taxes in Denton County are a little unbalanced. 80% of them are paid by us homeowners. Only about 20% are paid by businesses. So it became very important for us to continue our economic development prospects. I know you all are doing that here in Trophy Club, and we're certainly doing it in Denton County so that we can make the scales a little more equal. Let's take a look at what our annual property taxes look like. This was provided by our county appraisal district. And they took the average Denton County house is valued at $341,090. Looking at that with the tax rate that we have, which is a low tax rate, the total taxes would be almost $7,800. The school district, needless to say, gets most of your tax dollars from the property tax, 64%. The city, and we took the city of Denton because everybody's different. But if you have a city tax, that's usually about 26%. The county, little old Denton County just gets 10% of your property tax dollars. So that kind of shows you what, how your taxes are being spent. Now, I'm very proud of the fact of this chart. It shows the top 15 counties by their countywide tax rate. And as you can see, Denton County, way over here at the left, is the lowest in all of these 15 counties. As a matter of fact, with our low tax rate, we are only half as low as Williamson County. If you look over to Dallas County, they are three times the amount of Denton County's tax. And if you go to Hidalgo County, which is down in the valley, they're a little more than four times the tax rate that we have. So that's something we can all be very proud of. It's important to keep that tax rate low because frankly, we can't do anything really about your appraisals. Your property is going up in value. We're an area that people want to live in, so, you know, we're in a housing boom. We know that here in Denton County, growth is a big, big issue. I'm sure you are dealing with it as well. Although I believe Trophy Club is very, pretty well built out. From what I heard tonight, you have not nearly as many building permits being issued. But Denton County as a whole has 82 people per day who move into Denton County. We right now have an estimated population of about 887,000. And by 2023, only two years from now, it is estimated we will have 1 million people living in Denton County. Those people are all going to need county services. They're all going to need the same things that we are providing currently. And that's a real challenge for us. Because right now, just in Precinct Four, which is the western part of Denton County, there are at least 40,000 homes that have been platted and planned are being developed right now. Using the average of 2.5 people per home, that means I'm going to have 140,000 new residents in Precinct Four within the next year to two years. That's a lot of people, plus the ones that are already there. So we know that we do have challenges ahead. We feel that partnerships are the key. This growth is something that we all have to live with and manage. If we don't control the growth, it will control us. There are 18 municipalities in my precinct, and they have varying needs and varying ideas and varying ways to solve them. By doing this together, we can make Denton County and our part of Denton County a great place to live, work, and play. I'm eager to continue our partnership and to work with you all going forward. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Lamont?
Just two things, just a reminder that the freeze will be automatic. No one has to file to get the freeze.
That's correct, because they already know how old you are. So yes, not you in particular, Greg.
Well, okay.
Everyone knows how old Greg is.
Just to correct the record, I was born a year after Lincoln was assassinated. No truth to the rumor I was alive when he happened.
Now, you do have to file for homestead exemption. At the time you purchase your house, a good realtor will have told you that, and you should have already filed for that.
The other thing is, when will the new county building be opening?
We hope that it will be open by the end of the year. We're running a year behind schedule, as a matter of fact. We're not, the construction team is the one running behind. We're paying a lot of money for that building. It's going to be wonderful, and we want things to be right. So we are in the process of heavy negotiations right now with the contractor to make things, make sure things are corrected that should be. You'll all be invited. Love to have you come see our grand new building. It'll be so convenient because every county office will be right there. Any other questions? Thank you so much, I appreciate it. And for those who may still be here, I want to say thank you for your service and thank you for our freedom. I appreciate what you did.
Thank you very much. Item six, update on the pickleball project.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, good evening. Tonight I'll be providing, Council, with a pickleball update. As you recall, the last update that I presented back in December, we were directed to perform a search for a consultant for the pickleball, dedicated pickleball installation courts, so. Since then, staff has selected half and associates to perform the study.
Tony, I'm sorry, just one second.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Since then, half, staff has selected half and associates to perform a needs assessment of the location. As you can see on your screen, Independence Park East was selected as the best location for the pickleball courts. Eight to 10 pickleball courts is our options to go with, with the other option to install a championship court as well. And I'll talk a little bit about the potential impact to the newly, of the developed park due to these, to these courts. And please keep in mind, I'll come to council at a later date with more details in the, in the end of May to early June. So the impact for, no, the impact that it may cause for the park would be the potential of expanding our restrooms, potentially using those food trucks there for, as an option for food sales throughout the pickleball tournaments and whatnot. Throughout the study, when I meet with half and associates, we'll be discussing adequate parking for all, to make sure to accommodate all sports associations. It will be determined, well, we'll be also discussing the noise barrier as well to make sure that the appropriate shrubs would be installed, or trees, or any, any other items. A photometric study will also be involved in the, in my next presentation to council. Of course, we talked about the restroom needs and the final construction costs. I know that's going to be the most important topic for our final discussion at our next meeting. The biggest positive thing that I think that this will bring to the table is pickleball tourism. We can have the option to host different, or various pickleball tournaments throughout the year, potentially generating some revenue to the town as well. Again, I plan to bring the final discussion to council in May to early June with the final cost in construction. Obviously, there's different and various options that we can go with. And of course, any type of potential revenue that can bring to the town as well. That concludes my presentation.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just a couple.
Sure.
So yeah, I support where we're going with this, but just a couple questions I have. Like, I know you're looking at the restroom, so we'll come back to that. Is the food trucks looking to support any kind of food services there? Are we looking to upgrade the existing concessions? Just for clarification.
Sure, and I'll talk more to the consultant on what they recommend.
Okay.
I'll be bringing that to the, to the table at the next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you for the update. Look forward to the next one.
Thank you.
Do you have an update on Memorial Day, Mr. Norwood?
Okay, Monday, May 31, which Memorial Day is a little late this year, but we'll be having our annual celebration. That will be at Medlin Cemetery from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. We will have parking at the country club, and we will be shuttling people over. So hopefully make that as, as easy as can be. And sometime there's weather issues, as we know, but that will be Monday, May 31, at 10:00 a.m.
Councilman Monger?
You just used a term there that makes me cringe. You said celebration. Memorial Day is not a celebration. Memorial Day is a commemoration. And I mean, you might think it's a little deal, but it is a big deal, right? You don't say happy Memorial Day, because you don't say happy, remember the day your friend died. So just, as we go through, we want to keep it very respectful.
Okay, point well taken.
That's a good reminder, thank you very much. Okay, so May 31, from 10:00 to 11:00 at Medlin and Park at the Country Club for the shuttle to be brought over. Okay, on to individual items. Number eight, take appropriate action regarding town council minutes dated April 13, 2021, and town council work session minutes dated April 14, 2021.
Sean's on the phone, so I'll handle this one. I would like to make a motion to approve the town council minutes dated April 13, 2021, and the town council work session dated April 14, 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Protem Lamont, and a second by Councilmember Wilson. All in favor? It's unanimous, motion carries. Number nine, take appropriate action regarding Resolution 2021-01 nominating Sue Tejmal? Tejmal to the Danko Area 911 District Board of Managers.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-01 nominating Sue Tejmal to the Denton County 911 District Board of Managers.
Second.
All in favor? And motion carries. And just a little on this, several, several other cities are also nominating our current vice chair, Sue Tejmal, who has served on the Board of Managers since 2013. And she is eligible for appointment and has been expressed the desire to continue to serve. She is an attorney at law, and her terms expire on September 2021, so. Thank you for that. On to item 10, take appropriate action, ordinance 2021-08, for the transferring of funds from the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund to the General Fund to compensate for staff support and administrative expenses. Mr. Norwood and Mr. Irvin?
Mayor and Council, this is an item that council has brought up at our Goals Retreat in January. And we do have expenses that are associated primarily with July 4th, but also throughout the year on other events. Jill spends a fair amount of her time, as do, as do the Parks Department, police as well, and finance, who provides a lot of administrative support. So we've developed, you see in your packets, some ranges on staff expense from 5% to 25%. And again, those are legitimate expenses. And it would be a transfer of funds, but it's, it's tied to a number. It's not just a arbitrary number that we're looking at. So Mike, if you want to share any more details, I don't know if council has any questions.
Is anyone having questions on this? And, and just real quick, the reason it would be a transfer is it's been mentioned previously to keep all the general fund expenditures in one place. And so that's why we'll just do a transfer in this situation. But any questions?
Do we have a number to make a motion?
It would be approval of budget amendment number two, ordinance number 21, 2021-08. The total amount of the transfer is $94,582.
And that's on an annual basis?
Yes, sir, on an annual basis.
Okay.
And on a normal year, that would work out to about a 15% transfer from normal revenues of the hot fund.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-08 for the transferring of funds in the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund to the General Fund to compensate for staff report and administrative expenses in the amount of $94,582.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Protem Lamont, and a second by Councilmember Monger. All in favor? It's unanimous, motion carries. Thank you. Item 11, take appropriate action on ordinance 2021-09, transferring COVID-19 relief funds to the Fire and Police Department overtime line item for increased costs of supporting calls for service directly attributed to COVID-19. Again, Mr. Norwood and Mr. Irvin?
Yes, this item is paying for overtime costs associated, obviously with COVID, but as it impacts police and fire. Again, we are still making adjustments, you know, getting used to the new normal, so to speak. But at some point, we need to be mindful that that's the new normal. So these funds are, were down to less than $150,000 for COVID. But, you know, we feel very comfortable making, making this transfer to help on the overtime. It's just going forward, we need to be very careful, so.
Mayor Protem Lamont?
I attended the MUD meeting, and I know they requested to get the expenses and how much we got. I think they may be looking at trying to get some funds for the next round. And if there's any help we can give them, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And I believe this is the only line item in the fire services budget that was a little off, correct?
That's my understanding.
So that's great that we can take care of this with, with the money that was...
Do we need an amount for a motion, or we're not there yet?
The total amount will be $45,637.28, and that would be split between fire, fire EMS and police. And this would be budget, this would be ordinance 2021-09, budget amendment number three.
Budget amendment number three, cut that, budget amendment number three.
Like making a motion to approve 2021-09, budget amendment number three, transferring COVID-19 relief funds to the Fire and Police Department overtime line item for increased cost of supporting calls for service directly attributed to COVID-19 in the amount of $45,637.28.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Lamont, and a second by Councilmember Monger, all in favor? It's unanimous, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now number 12, review and provide feedback on town council rules and procedures. Section 1.03.03.5A to state that draft agendas be emailed to council at a minimum of one week prior to the regular town council meetings. And section 1.03.03.5D to state that submission of agenda items be made utilizing Prime Gov to the Town Secretary's Office a minimum of eight days prior to the meeting. I know we're going to make a little, few changes on this, right?
Yes. So. Make an amendment to replace section 1-03-03.5A of the rules of procedure to read as follows. State, to state that draft agendas be emailed to council at a minimum of one week prior to the regulation, I'm sorry, prior to the regular town council meetings. We'll do two separate motions on this, okay?
Okay, and do I have a second?
Second.
Get that one to Jurassic. A motion by Mayor Protem Lamont, and a second by Councilmember Jurassic. All in favor? And it's unanimous, motion carries.
Make a motion to delete section 1.0, I'm sorry, 1.03.03.5D.
Do I have a second? Do you need explanation on that? That just says we can submit edits to the draft agenda up until, as it reads, we would have to do it by the, what was the day, Monday? This allows us to do it up until.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no time limit.
There's no really time limit.
Submission of agenda items.
Okay, so I just have a question as far as the preceding Monday. Okay, so I just have a question as far as the preceding Monday. Is that like, just to be clear, is it the Monday?
This deletes that requirement.
Just deletes that requirement?
Yeah, so this makes us, yeah. This gives us more flexibility in making edits and suggestions, yeah.
My apologies for not making that clear.
Shame on you. Okay, now, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Protem Lamont, and a second by Councilmember Menger. All in favor? And it's unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you. This just allows us a little more time to review agenda items and ask questions, and just be more effective and productive in our meetings. So, thank you for that. On to 13, future agenda items. Mr. Norwood?
You see some updates in your packet. We did get the second statute. I believe Anita has sent you a couple of emails over the past couple of weeks to the Arts Subcommittee of Council, giving you a kind of a status of where that stands. And then, we've talked about the strategic goals, and I've sent out a survey, our survey. I sent out an email last week about the surveys, and the, the numbers are pretty staggering. So, just because they've met the 450 roughly surveys to make it statistically valid, they will continue accepting surveys, and we have put information out publicly on our website. There are some that did not receive it. Maybe it got thrown away, what have you. So, they, there's a mechanism in place that they can obtain that. So, we've probably got another week or so, and, and then we'll close it, and they'll start tabulating. And then, on the hazardous mitigation plan, that was completed and was submitted last month. So, I don't think it was a hard and fast rule that if we didn't do it in the fifth year, then, you know, we're going to be penalized, but it was something that needed to be done. And I believe there was some additional monies that were left over from a previous consulting agreement with Fries and Nichols, so that has been taken care of.
Councilmember Menger?
I'd like to add an item. I'd like to get a report on what happened with the town cleanup and, and what we're doing going forward.
Yeah, that's on the next update, I believe. We have that.
Yes, we should have a, a site selected, and we should have a plan in place.
Yeah, I think we just need to talk about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, and just a reminder to everyone, if you're watching, please send in your surveys. You know, your voice, our future, I think, is, is that it? That we were saying, you know, you live here, you enjoy the amenities, you enjoy our town, and, and it's really gives us a new baseline to where we are, where we want to be, how we're doing, the things that you're interested in, things that you'd like to see, things you'd like to improve upon. And it's really your time to voice your opinion in the proper forum, where we can, you know, listen and really hear what, what you want. And it's really the best way to let us know how you feel. I know we all like to run to social media, but we don't always see that, and that's really not the best indicator of the pulse of the town. So, I encourage everyone to please fill out the surveys, and there is a section in the survey that you have the ability to write in any issue that you would like to discuss. Of course, we couldn't make a 100-page survey with, you know, thousands of questions, so we do allow you that opportunity to let us know what you would like us to address. We're always open to hear your feedback, so please fill out the survey, and of course, feel free to reach out to us anytime. And I think we have about another week to get those in, so please get those in. And also, today was the last day of early voting, but we still have Election Day on May 1, so please remember to vote as well. Okay, on to item 14. Take appropriate action on the repaired Trophy Park Road to be completed by Reynolds Asphalt through the approved interlo, interlocal agreement with the city of Grand Prairie. This was tabled at the regular meeting of April 13.
I'll make a motion to remove this item from consideration, as the repair will be made by in-house personnel with no additional cost to the Trophy Club taxpayers.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Protem Lamont. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Girasi. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Great. Okay, item 15, executive session pursuant to the following section of the Texas Government Code, annotated Chapter 551, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074, Personnel Matters, Annual Review of Town Manager. It is now 7:55, and we are in executive session. Okay, reconvene in a regular session at 9:06. There was no action taken during executive session, so we are adjourning at 9:07.